Welcome, everybody, to tonight's regular city council meeting, September 3rd, just a few minutes after 7:00 PM. Going to call this meeting to order at this time, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll call?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Gothols.
Here.
Councilmember Lee. Deputy Mayor Papin.
Here.
And Mayor Bonilla.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we want to welcome everybody back to in-person city council meetings. We're actually having a hybrid city council meeting these days. I want to mention that for those who are here and want to make a public comment, please be sure to grab one of the yellow speaker slips and turn it into the city clerk. The sooner the better, so we know how many people want to speak under any item. If you want to speak on an item later, please go ahead and turn your slip in as soon as you can. And that applies to any public comment during the evening. So we have other ways to participate for those who are not here. If you're participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you'll be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. And when you're called upon, press star six to unmute. So these are the options, and they'll be available until I close the public comment period for any specific item. So tonight, we are going to have a couple of ceremonial items. The first one will be recognition for Mr. Bart Charlo of the Samaritan House, the CEO at the Samaritan House. And I have here. Come on down, Bart. A proclamation, recognizing Bart, I'm going to go ahead and read this. Whereas Samaritan House is an invaluable resource in our community that leads the charge in combating homelessness, empowering individuals to overcome poverty through food service programs, schooling and children's programs, case management, worker resources, and housing and shelter assistance. And whereas for eight years Bart Charlo has been at the helm, leading this organization with compassion, vision, and optimism through some of its most challenging times. And whereas Bart's notable accomplishments include adding pioneering services to Samaritan House clinics, including the first two food pharmacies in California, launching the first medical respite service in a homeless shelter in the county, and adding mental health services to Samaritan House clinics. And whereas Bart managed the organization's COVID-19 response, which in turn doubled food services, quintupled case management, and financial assistance, supported more than $115 million in funding during the COVID-19 emergency and doubled direct service capacity to 25,000 individuals. And whereas it is with great appreciation for Bart Charlo that we extend our best wishes for the lasting success of this worthy organization and wish him well as he embarks on this next exciting chapter. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of San Mateo hereby recognizes Bart Charlo, CEO Samaritan House, for his eight years of dedication to the people of San Mateo. Signed by the mayor, but really given to you by all the city council members. And I think. Bart, do you want to have a few words, or should I?
Sure. One of the things I realized as you were speaking, Rick, is knowing you, you know the old line about if you give a guy a hammer, everything looks like a nail? But you're the guy in there that knows. Anyway, thank you all. I mean, it's an honor that I actually do not feel that I deserve to be truthful with you. Because I tell people that I'm the conductor, and there's a whole orchestra that's really making the beautiful music. And as you probably know, Samaritan House literally has a cast of thousands of people, almost 4,000 of our neighbors who are helping other neighbors, you know, keep them housed and fed and healthy and clothed and all of those wonderful things. I get to be a part of it. You've all been a part of it. I know you personally. You have supported us, you've trusted us, you've even volunteered and helped us do some of this work together. And what you've done is you've kind of proven something that I've said from the day I got to Samaritan House. And that is that Samaritan House is the great heart of a great community. What you've shown is what a great community San Mateo can be. So even as you're honoring me, I'm honoring you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to invite the council to come down for a photo opportunity with you, Bart.
This is as close as I've come to human beings without a mask on in three years.
Okay, so we do the picture thing, right? There we go.
Thank you, Bart.
Thank you, Bart. Thank you for that, everybody. Now we move on to the second ceremonial item, which is in recognition of National Hispanic Heritage Month. And here is the proclamation. Whereas, sorry, wrong one. Bart, I gave you the wrong one. I do have a Cuban grandmother, but I'm. Okay, now. National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month was enacted into law on August 17, 1988, and is formally celebrated from September 15 through October 15. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to honor and celebrate the distinct cultures of Americans whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to recognize Hispanic Americans who have shaped our history and show our respect and appreciation for those who immeasurably contribute to our society each day. And whereas the Hispanic and Latinx population consists of over 62 million people and represents the largest ethnic or racial minority in the United States. And whereas the nationwide theme for 2022 is Unidos Inclusivity for a Stronger Nation. Unidos, for those of you, is unity. This theme encourages us to ensure that all voices are represented and welcomed to help build strong communities. And whereas Hispanic Americans bring vibrant culture and life to our community, and their traditions are respected and celebrated as part of our rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to rededicate ourselves to building a world where diversity is cherished. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of San Mateo hereby recognizes National Hispanic Heritage Month. Signed today by Mayor San Mateo. Thank you all very much. Now we move on to the next part of tonight's agenda, which is the consent calendar. Deputy Clerk, could you please do the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered by council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number three, city council meeting minutes approval. Senate Bill Nine Ordinance Adoption. Item number five, wastewater treatment plant mosquito abatement agreement. Item number six, City of San Mateo Conflict of Interest Code 2022 Pionell Update. Item number seven has been withdrawn by staff request due to action taken at the state level. Item number eight, Solid Waste 2023 Rate Setting and Proposition 218 Notification. Item number nine, 111, 113, and 115 Monte Diablo Avenue Public Improvements Acceptance. Item number 10, Casanova Park Restroom Remodel Contract. Item number 11, Off-Site Plan Review and Certified Access Specialist Services Amendment. And finally, item number 12, Office of Traffic Safety Grant Spending Plan.
Thank you very much. Let me see here, is there any member of the council who would like to pull one of these items from the consent calendar? There is one. It's me. I want to pull item number four. Is there any member of the public wishing to pull any item from the consent calendar for further discussion? Anybody online?
If anyone online would like to comment on any consent calendar items, please raise your hand now. And Mr. Mayor, I have no speakers in the room who have turned in a speaker card, and I am seeing no hands raised. So for this consent calendar, I see no public comment.
Thank you very much. So we're going to close the consent calendar public comment right now. And we're going to bring this back for a motion. And we will, the motion would be for everything except item four. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Papin?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries by zero.
Thank you. So I pulled item four because item four is that which I voted no on. It's the Senate Bill Nine Ordinance Adoption, which was discussed at the last council meeting. I voted no on it then. I'm going to vote no on it now. So I just wanted to say that. And if somebody wants to make a motion to approve it in seconds, then we'll move forward with that vote.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, and Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gothols?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Papin?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries for one.
Okay, thank you. And now we're going on to public comment. Next on the agenda, members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on tonight's agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from taking any action on what matters which are not on tonight's agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda if needed. Madam Clerk, do we know how many?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And to further explain our process, what we are doing now is taking public comment in the room first, and then we will take public comment remotely. I'm asking you now, if you have not turned in a speaker slip to me, to do so immediately, so we know how many numbers. I have right now two in-person public comments. And online in the virtual environment, I have two speakers. If you plan to speak under public comment, please raise your hand now, and we will take public comment. We have four speakers in all. And so our first speaker.
Madam Clerk, four speakers in all, three minutes each.
So our first speaker is Susan Ray. Yes, please come up to the microphone. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susie Ray. I'm a longtime San Mateo resident. I'm also the chair of San Mateo County Democracy for America, a charter democratic club, and a supporter of Fixing San Mateo County. I want to thank the city council members who have endorsed Fixing San Mateo County. I am happy to say that on September 13th, the Board of Supervisors voted unanimously to create a committee to look into civilian oversight of the sheriff's office as requested by the nonpartisan Fixing San Mateo County. And thank you to Mayor Bonilla for bringing it up at the last council meeting. I am asking the city council to pass a resolution as requested by Fixing San Mateo County to ask the Board of Supervisors to pass a strong ordinance to create a civilian oversight board and an inspector general, both with subpoena power. I hope that the city council can also set up a study session to hear from representatives of Fixing San Mateo County. A civilian oversight, it protects civil rights, it increases transparency and accountability, it builds bridges between law enforcement and the community, and it supports effective policing. Both the current sheriff and the sheriff-elect have publicly said that they support the notion of oversight. And there are over 220 jurisdictions around the country, 25 of them in California, that have now established civilian oversight over their local police or sheriff. And this includes the counties of Santa Clara, Los Angeles, Sacramento, San Diego, San Francisco, and Sonoma. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Laura Bent.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and city council members. Again, my name is Laura Bent. I am by day the chief operating officer at Samaritan House, so I want to say thank you for recognizing Bart. He's an incredible human being who has given most of his life to human services. And so we very much appreciate you recognizing him. I also want to celebrate that we opened and launched El Camino House here in City of San Mateo today. And I want to thank all of the city staff and our city council for the support and the work with us to get that open today. I will now switch hats and become the president of the Board for the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce. And I am here to again express some gratitude. I want to say thank you very much for assisting us with the first annual community fest. I want to report that we had an estimated 4,000 attendees downtown San Mateo. The chamber made just over 13,000 after expenses, so it was a great success from that perspective. And all of that funding will go to support small business, so a very important event. I also want to thank you for allowing us to partner with you for the three nights on B Street. Again, the chamber was allowed to partner with you and sell beer and wine at that event, and we made a significant amount of money to support our small businesses. I will also advertise, come see us October 22 at the city centennial event in Central Park. Again, the funding that comes out of that will support all of the small businesses and our business assistance center that the chamber runs. Lastly, I want to report that our leadership program, the 31st Leadership Program, launched in September. We have a full class of 35 students. And I know at least one city staff person is participating in that. So we really appreciate the partnership, and we're very excited to share that information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we have two remote speakers. Our very first one is Nancy Goodban, followed by Elaine Salinger, who will be our last speaker. Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much. My name's Nancy Goodban. I'm in Redwood City, but I do love San Mateo. I'm the executive director of Fixing San Mateo County. And I wanted to support and echo what Susie Ray said. I'm also a member of Democracy for America with her. And thank you for your, those of you who've endorsed Fixing San Mateo County. Thank you to Mayor Bonilla for bringing it up last time. And really request that the council consider passing a resolution to ask the Board of Supervisors to pass a strong ordinance to create a civilian oversight board and an inspector general with subpoena power. I hope that city council can also set up a study session to hear from representatives. We'd be happy to share more information and answer questions. And again, you know, it's here to protect us. It's fiscally responsible. It helps protect civil rights. It builds effect more because there's connection between and allows all of us to have a safer community. And we do have support from both the current sheriff and the sheriff-elect. They've said that publicly, that they're in support of oversight. So again, thank you for considering it, and we hope that you will pick up at the council to go ahead and look at passing a resolution to tell the, ask the Board of Supervisors to pass a strong ordinance. We're thrilled that they did create a committee, a Board of Supervisors Committee. But now they really need to know that there's public support out in the community and from the cities for this effort. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Elaine Salinger.
Hi, my name is Elaine Salinger. I live in San Mateo. I've lived there for 33 years, I think. And I am a volunteer with Fixing San Mateo County. I really want to thank the city council members who have endorsed Fixing San Mateo County. And I appreciate talking about this, particularly Mayor Bonilla talking about this at the last city council meeting. I'm asking, as the other two Fixing San Mateo members have asked, I'm asking the city council to pass a resolution to ask the Board of Supervisors to pass strong ordinance to create a civilian oversight board with an inspector general, both with subpoena power. And I hope that the city council will also set up a study session to hear from the representatives of Fixing San Mateo County. And I don't want to repeat what the other speakers have said. I'll just say that in San Mateo County, black people are arrested at nine times the rate of white people and Hispanics at twice the rate, and we need to do better. This is just one of the reasons that we need to have oversight. So thank you so much, and I hope that you will follow up with our request.
Thank you. That is our last speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Then we will close the public comment period at this point and come back to the council. We're going to move on to item 13, which is Old Business Draft Goals, Policies and Actions for the Circulation, Public Services and Facilities, Noise and Conservation, Open Space and Recreation Elements General Plan Update. So I see we have Mr. Zachary Doll here tonight from our
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Zach Doll, deputy director with the city's Community Development Department. I'm here before you this evening with part one of our presentation of the draft goals, policies, and actions for the city's general plan update. Before I get started, I do want to acknowledge the team that is supporting this multi-year general plan update effort, starting with our core team comprised of staff from the city's Community Development and Public Works Departments. Also, our technical advisory committee, which includes over 40 staff members from all city departments and San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department, and our consultant team, which is led by Placeworks. For tonight's agenda, I will start with a presentation, following with clarifying questions and public comment, and then moving to council discussion and ultimately direction on the four elements before you this evening. For tonight, I will provide an overview of the goals, policies, and actions for our conservation, open space, and recreation element, public services and facilities, noise, and circulation. We'll receive public comments, and then we are seeking council discussion and ultimately direction on these four elements. So I do want to point your attention to four of the attachments in your agenda report as it does include the draft goals, policies, and actions for each of these elements, and it does include them in track changes. And so what we wanted to reflect was an ongoing evolution of these goals and policies based on the input we've been receiving. These track changes include input that we've received from the community, the general plan subcommittee, and/or the planning commission. And we do include the original version and then a track changes version below, so you can see the recommended changes or revisions that are before you this evening. And I'll go ahead and have these documents available to support your discussion later on this evening. So first, a brief project overview. The general plan update has been a multi-year process that originally started back in 2018. The first part of this process was the development of a vision statement, which was developed through extensive community engagement. And it really establishes the overarching underpinnings for the general plan update. And for our update, it is that San Mateo is a vibrant, diverse, livable, and a healthy community that respects the quality of its neighborhoods, fosters a flourishing economy, and is committed to equity and is a leader in environmental sustainability. Right now, we are in the draft goals, policies, and actions phase of this general plan update process. And these two meetings will wrap this phase up. We will then transition into the preparation of our draft general plan and environmental impact report with an ultimate goal of having a general plan that's ready for adoption by the end of 2023. The general plan is primarily composed of eight elements, seven of which are part of the general plan update process, and then our housing element, which is being prepared separately in order to comply with state requirements. In addition, the general plan update will include an introduction, appendices, a glossary, acknowledgements, and then separately, an implementation plan. Along with the draft goals, policies, and actions that were published in July, we also initiated our next phase of community outreach and engagement to correlate with this latest element of the general plan update. As part of our community engagement, we started with a citywide newsletter that was mailed to every household in San Mateo in late July. And then we initiated an online survey that to date has received over 200 responses. And then we initiated a number of pop-up community engagement events and workshops mid-August through the end of September. We've had a total of 12 pop-up events and three workshops, two of which were in person and one was virtual. And we just wanted to provide an exhibit to give you an idea of where around the city these events have been taking place. We had a pop-up event at Central Park. We've had a number of events downtown in the north central neighborhood, the Shoreview neighborhoods, as well as a couple of events in the south and the western part of the city. And here are a few photos. We have staff volunteers, both from our general plan team as well as from around the city, that have been supporting this phase of community engagement and at our various workshops and events. In addition, we have had our meeting series with three general plan subcommittee meetings in August, two planning commission meetings in September, and then this is our first of two meetings with you this evening, and then again on November 7. Also, I did want to highlight the upcoming meetings where council have an opportunity to weigh in on the draft general plan before it is ready for adoption. That includes a study session that will hold next spring to discuss measure Y. We are looking at three city council meetings to consider the draft general plan next summer, and then two adoption hearings later on toward the end of 2023. And then moving into the draft goals, policies, and actions themselves. First, wanted to note how they fit in within the larger general plan. Each element includes background information and context narrative, as well as maps, photos, and other illustrations that really kind of support and provide context for the goals, policies, and actions that are before you. So really, you're seeing a main piece of each element, but there's going to be a lot more information to support them. And this is to give you an idea, pulling an example from our current general plan of how our background narrative and context narratives support our goals and policies. Our updated general plan will look significantly different from our current one, but the overall flow will be similar. And really, the goal is to provide that context. So we've received various comments from our planning commission, GPS, and the public that maybe aren't necessarily going in as goals or policies, but could definitely be folded in as background or context narrative. And ultimately, the goal is that this information is succinct and enduring to really live throughout the 20-year lifespan of our updated general plan. So also, to help guide your discussion here this evening, we wanted to provide some definition for what is a goal, a policy, and an action. A goal is a description of a general desired result, usually an overarching guidance. You have a policy which regulates activity within the city, and it also can guide decision-making and direct ongoing efforts as the city works to achieve a goal. And then an action is a more specific measure, procedure, or technique that's intended to reach a specific goal or implement a policy. You can have policies without actions, but generally, an action is always going to be there to support either a policy or an overarching goal. Also, to give you a background on how the draft goals, policies and actions were developed and got into the place where they are before you this evening, it did start with a review of our existing general plan. And this was, there was a lot of collaboration with staff over multiple years where we worked to bring these forward, identify what's been working, what has not been working so well, what is still relevant, and then also looking at our current context and state and regulatory environment. Many of the issues before us today didn't really exist in their current form in two thousand and ten, when the general plan was last updated. And then also, they have been updated over time through our as influenced by our various community outreach and engagement phases. And so input from our community members, the GPS, planning commission and council at prior meetings, all of that input has also been considered when drafting these goals, policies and actions. And then, once you provide direction here and at our next meeting, we will then move forward to fold them into the draft general plan. So I'm going to now move to our four elements that are that are under consideration for this evening. Our first one is conservation, open space and recreation. Within this element, the goals, policies and actions cover the areas of environmental stewardship, access to nature, water quality creeks and riparian areas, air quality, hillsides, archaeological and tribal cultural resources, and parks and recreation. These are the overview areas. If you have questions, I also have slides that can provide more detailed information about the goals and associated policies and actions. The community feedback that we've received on this element has included that we maintain and preserve our heritage trees, add fire prevention measures in open space, improve and increase parks and recreation facilities and trails, you increase use of drought tolerant landscaping, encourage solar panels and reduce light pollution. Our general plan subcommittee feedback on this element, I won't go over all these, but it included items such as increasing public accessibility to private open space and looking at and making sure that our public spaces are age-integrated and with particular focus on teens. And we do have a more detailed narrative of the GPS feedback in your packet, and we can come back to this if you have any additional questions. Moving to our planning commission recommendation on this element, they did note an overarching agreement with the general plan subcommittee comments, as well as providing a variety of other recommendations that were also provided in your packet, and we can discuss in more detail if you have any questions. And this is the recommendations continued on this element. And then moving to public services and facilities. In this element, we address the topics of community safety, water supply, sewer and storm drainage facilities, public services and facilities, children, youth in the schools, healthcare and social services, and solid waste. Community feedback that we received on this element include improving police and fire response times, increasing police street patrols, supporting the homeless, improving wellness resources, improving access to healthy foods, and reducing food and construction waste. Similarly, for this one with our general plan subcommittee, we've got a variety of detailed feedback that we can visit, but it included comments about looking at adding more policies related to code enforcement and and looking at how sewer laterals and and our infrastructure is maintained. And you can see, they did have a variety of comments on this element. Our planning commission also had a variety of of recommendations, including general support for the general plan subcommittee comments. And they did also look at how we maintain our facilities and did identify funding and prioritization as two elements to consider. Moving to our noise element. This element is the most focused of our our general plan elements and focuses really on two subject areas. One, which is noise sensitive land uses, and the second, which is minimization of our of unhealthy noise. Community feedback on this included reduction of of noise sources such as cow train, aircraft and noise from vehicles, a prohibition on gas-powered leaf blowers, and reducing the use of illegal fireworks. The general plan subcommittee feedback included a number of specific elements that related to railroad noise and also noise from leaf blowers and other landscaping equipment. And then similarly, the the planning commission recommendations did have no discussions about leaf blowers and then also general support for the the GPS recommendations. And then the last element before you this evening is our circulation element. Our circulation element includes topic areas that address multimodal transportation, transportation demand management, pedestrians, bicycles and micro mobility, transit and mobility services, roadway improvements, parking management and future mobility and technology. In this area, we had a variety of community feedback, including reducing or eliminating traffic fatalities, improving safety for all travel modes, improving bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, reducing traffic congestion and speeding, improving transit access, adding electrical vehicle infrastructure, adding street lighting citywide, and improving general roadway conditions. Also, in this area, there is a a written comment that we received from Move San Mateo, which did receive recognition and support from both the general plan subcommittee and our planning commission. For the general plan subcommittee, they had a variety of comments on this that that talked about different levels of prioritization for certain areas within, looking at pedestrians, bicycle infrastructure and and transit, and then, as as noted, also expressing support for a variety of public comments, including the letter from Move San Mateo. And then we do have their feedback continued, three pages worth. And then moving to the planning commission recommendations, their comments were similar to that of the general plan subcommittee, and we can go into those in more detail if if you do have any questions. I did want to note the three topics that will be coming back to you on November seventh, which includes land use, community design and historic resources and safety. So the goal of tonight's meeting is to focus on those four land use elements that I are four elements that I just went over with the remaining three coming back for discussion next month. So for your discussion and direction this evening, we are asking for input on the goals, policies and actions for these four elements, and particularly looking at the proposed revisions that are in your packet. If you agree with those, is there anything else that you would like to change or add? Are there policies that should be changed, i.e. strengthened or reduced, whether it's required or recommend or support? And then ultimately, providing that direction to us, which would then allow the general plan team to move forward with drafting of the full general plan, draft general plan for these four elements. And then we also do for any more minor grammatical or typographic edits, you can definitely email me or email our general plan email, and we can look to get those folded in. There's also a couple topics that we wanted to highlight where we've see received input that's kind of gone, that's either conflicted or covered the gamut. So we wanted to receive direction from council before addressing any edits in our draft goals, policies and actions. For the conservation, open space and recreation element, there was a variety of comments related to frequency of surveys and how to prioritize funding or identify funding sources. And so our question would be, are the the policies and actions that are currently drafted sufficient? Or do you want to see additional to address this topic? Similar for public services and facilities, we received comments on childcare services and facilities. And so we're asking, are what is currently drafted sufficient, or would you like to see additional policies or actions folded in? And then, under circulation, we did hear a lot of different comments about different aspects of our transportation infrastructure that should be prioritized. And so we wanted to get direction from council. Overall, the circulation element is focusing on prioritizing multimodal transportation infrastructure that you that benefits all users. But we've heard different feedback on whether we should prioritize traffic calming and safety, bicycle infrastructure or pedestrian improvements in sidewalk widening sidewalks. And so the the public, the general plan subcommittee and planning commission all provided different elements to this, so we wanted direction from council before making any changes to the circulation element. And then similar for our parking policies, we will need to review and update based on recent state legislation that was adopted. And we are interested to hear from the council any overarching direction that should be prioritized within our parking policies, because when we are looking at topics such as unbundled parking, parking minimums, maximums, shared parking, sometimes they can conflict with each other. So ideally, we have a set of parking policies that is fully aligned, and we would look to council for any guidance on that front. So that does conclude staff's presentation. I am available if you have any questions. I also want to note that we do have public works and recreation staff that's available this evening as well, if you've got any questions for for those areas. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doll. So let me bring it to the council. Questions?
I just had two questions. One, I'd like to see somewhere in here, not only that we're encouraging the use of solar panels, but that we are encouraging the creation of micro grids, whether that is folks that have their own batteries, that they can, you know, sell back energy, or we can do it on public buildings. We have, you know, if if there's an outage, we may be able to supply because we're actually storing energy as well as trying to capture energy just energy just to use on the spot. So I didn't see that in there, and I'm hopeful that it could be put in there somewhere. I'll leave it to you as to where, if my colleagues agree. And then the other thing was, there was some talk in the recreation area about collaborating with school districts for the use of gymnasiums, and I like to add swimming pools.
Definitely would. Just to respond to your question about the energy grid, energy is currently addressed within the safety element. And so we can definitely bring that back as part of our discussion on November seventh. But one of the, I think the questions that came up was, is it most appropriately placed there? And I think with public services and facilities, energy may be more appropriately located there. So we may look at making that shift when between now and when we draft the general plan.
Good. That was looking, I thought, okay, thanks for the clarification.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Goldfoss?
I want to make sure that I understand the feedback that you're looking for from us. So for example, I agree with all the policies. I think there was fantastic illustration of of what our goals are and and what policies we're looking for when it comes to multimodal transportation and Vision Zero and things like that. But if we feel that the most important needs for action that need to be taken first deal with safety and pedestrians, whether it's crossing the street or things like that, is that the kind of feedback that you're looking for is the prioritization of of safety as opposed to widening sidewalks? Is that what you're looking for from us tonight?
Yes, I mean, if there's a specific topic within circulation that merits that increased prioritization, that feedback would be useful, because that would then help the general plan team as we draft the full circulation element, align the policies and the narrative to support that.
Okay. Other council members? Questions? Councilmember Lee?
Yeah. See, I have a, I have a question. I was trying to look over the integration of the input from the general plan subcommittee, including some of our Parks and Rec commissioners who specifically called out an action item or wanting to have the inclusion of an action item of exploring funding for facility upgrades. Was that, was that ultimately integrated?
With regard to funding, I think we would be looking for direction from council first. Oftentimes, that is better addressed within the budgeting process. But if there's language that is that that the council feels is appropriate to include with regard to funding for parks and rec, we can definitely look at folding that into the the goals, policies and actions for for that element.
Well, I think that a number of us have spoken about wanting to pursue a broad range of funding options, including public-private partnerships, including partnerships to expand facilities through cooperation with the school district. But I think I I think that omitting any language around funding and looking at every possible funding avenue might be a missed opportunity, given the amount of conversation that we've had about this being a shared priority.
We can definitely make sure that's strengthened. If if there's direction from council to move that way, we can definitely make sure that we have policies or associated actions that can speak to that and make sure it's addressed.
Let's see. And then I guess I I do have another question sort of on a different channel. When there were a couple, there were a couple of community members who raised up the idea and interest of expanding community gardening access, and I didn't see that reflected in the goals or actions. And this is something that I've been interested in exploring for many years now and have been told, well, like, the general plan is the place to do it. So where would, where where do you believe it would be best situated, given sort of the different components of of the general plan? To expand, and specifically, I'm talking about community garden access, creation of additional community garden space, thinking even more broadly about about expanding our our landscaping strategies to also include edibles and and addressing, you know, food insecurity through edible gardening, as well as, you know, our current practice, which is to try to prioritize native and drought resistant plants. So I don't, I'm posing the question again. Where do you believe that community gardening and sustainable edible food, like, food policies should be in the components as they're currently structured?
Right now, we do have some policies and actions related to urban agriculture within the land use element go goals, policies and actions. But if there's a desire to see them reflected in the conservation, open space and parks, recreation element, we could look at that as well.
I would like it to be, because I think it's an, it it's a that would be my preference is to have it sort of visible in both both places, because I think that it's a it's one of those sort of intersectional strategies. Let's see. And let's see, I had another question. I did know that there was a input about changing the language to eliminate the word citizen and to and replace it with the word resident. I don't think that that was that. I don't believe that happened to completion. I noted a couple of places where it was still said citizen, where I don't think that those specific policies are are only addressing the needs of citizens by definition. So policy PS dash P one point six and point seven. And then my other question is where I I know that we have like a lot of moving parts, and there's always some kind of gaps and redundancies in terms of the plans that we develop and how they mesh with or are fully reflective of some of the other plans that have touch points. And so I just wanted to ask, was there or could there be an effort to make sure that all of the council strategic goals, like all fifty of them, are are actually included in the actions and goals where appropriate? Is that, is there, has there been any thought in terms of like how to wed our council strategic goals that are relevant to some of these components and bring them into the the goals and policies and actions that we that we're trying to capture in the twenty-year vision and policy map?
I think it depends on the the timeline, the the council priorities or a more near-term list, but where appropriate, we would list, but where appropriate, we would definitely look to that to guide how we're crafting the policies and actions and goals that go into the general plan.
Okay, yeah. So I think I appreciate that distinction with the timeline. But I do think that there may have been some omissions. And there's, are we in questions still or comments?
Questions?
Okay, I'll stop there.
Thank you very much. Okay. No questions over there? I don't have any questions here, so let's dash right over to public comment.
Thank you. If you're on the call and would like to talk about the general plan policy updates, please raise your hand now. Mr. Mayor, I do know, I do not have any in person commentators. I'll give you another second to raise your hand. We are trying to find out how many speakers there are so we can assign the appropriate amount of time. So if you intend to speak, please raise your hand now. All right, we have three speakers, Mr. Mayor, and our last speaker will be David Hunt.
Thank you very much. Let's give them three minutes each.
Thank you, Yiming Luell. Please go, go ahead and make your comments.
Okay. Good evening, council and staff. My name is Yiming and I'm a senior at Crystal Springs Upland School in Hillsborough. I live in Foster City, but I commute by bike to school through San Mateo, specifically on Fashion Island Boulevard and 19th Avenue under Highway 92, and then on South Grant Street. I think it's really important that we prioritize sustainable modes of transportation such as walking, biking and taking public transit in the general plan. And we build infrastructure that makes walking and biking safe in San Mateo. The two specific provisions I think are most important are the higher requirements for bike boulevards and the switching the place of on-street parking and bike lanes, especially in residential areas. Right now, bike boulevards are just paint and signage. And I think we should raise requirements so that you need more than a shero on a, on the ground to qualify as a bike boulevard. Similarly, I think we should switch the places of the bike lanes and on-street parking so that it's hard to get hit by a door while riding a bike in the bike lane. These revisions would be under goal C dash four proposed policies 4.8 and 4.9. And as someone who bikes to school almost every day, these policies would make my commute much safer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ryan Motashemi. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, San Mateo City Council Honorable Mayor Bonia. I wanted to thank, my name is Ryan Motashemi. I'm a team lead for Move San Mateo. I wanted to thank staff for reviewing feedback provided by the community and also Move San Mateo members. And I wanted to thank them for incorporating some of that feedback into proposed and into the proposed draft policies, plans and actions for the general plan circulation element. I wanted to specifically draw your attention to the unbundled parking action. Currently, it's stated as encourage unbundled parking. However, I will note that I've spoken with at least one developer that has explicitly said that because existing and new developments do not, are not required to provide unbundled parking, they are, that that makes developments that do provide unbund, that do require unbundled parking to be at a competitive disadvantage because free parking is seen as an amenity. So the lack of creating a floor of what developments must provide is make is disincentivizing the unbundled parking, which we know reduces car dependency and would help us meet reduced VMT per capita goals. That's one thing I would suggest. Also, since this is a 20 year vision document, I think an important goal is that is kind of is in line with our goal of reconnecting and bridging over barriers created by transportation facilities, most notably railroads and freeways in the city would be to would be to study and implement a cap of Highway 101 through San Mateo. And Highway 101 is the, has the most congestion and is the most trafficked transportation facility that runs through the city of San Mateo. It is a major source of noise and air pollution and 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 a serious traffic safety issue. On city of San Mateo streets, there are, we have been doing a relatively good job of reducing traffic fatalities, but we forget about Highway 101 and our freeways that are under management by by the state. And so it's a big safety issue as well. I would say that putting a cap on 101 and would help, at least help us address the the noise and emissions issues and open up new land for open space and housing, both of which it's clear that the community wants and needs. So I would suggest that as a goal with a policy to evaluate the feasibility of such a project and work with state partners on a potential solution in the future, since this is a 20 year visioning document. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our last speaker is David Hunt. Please go ahead, David.
Hello, council. Thanks for your time and taking my comment. I was trying to echo Yiming's comments on bike boulevards. It's really important to have concrete and objective requirements for what can be considered a bike boulevard. I know that sheros in San Mateo and elsewhere feel very unsafe and dangerous to cyclists, especially when you're biking with children. And so having requirements that make sense for feeling of safety when biking, either as an experienced cyclist or with children, I think would be a great addition to the plan. Also echoing the the ordering of safety and parking and bike lanes ordering that Yiming mentioned, I think is worthwhile. And then my last comment would be, this may not be the appropriate place for this to be addressed, but we had an amazing 2011 Bike Master Plan. We have another amazing 2020 Bike Master Plan. I think the general plan has some amazing components of Vision Zero and multimodal transportation that are important. But how do we get the conversation going on on how these things are funded and how we take action on them? I think that's an important aspect of it. And if there's any way for some of that to be addressed or added in there, I think it would be appreciated. All right. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And for the other attendees in the room, we have a rule that we explained where we are taking hands raised for public comment at the beginning of the public comments. So we know the number of people who will be commenting. Our last speaker was David Hunt. For the record, please note that on our agendas on the bottom and on the website on the public meeting portal, these rules are all explained. So at this time, we are done with public comment. Thank you very much.
However, please feel free to send an email regarding whatever your comments are.
Yes, you can send us as clerk@cityofsanmateo.org.
And they will be sent to the council members. Thank you. Okay, that closes public comment and we're back to staff for comments. Mr. Doll, is there some information you want to put up on the screen for us to work with or?
Yes, let me, we would recommend for for ease of getting through, if you went element by element, the order is up to you as to which ones you want to take. Would you, I can put up the policies for each element or cue up that slide that shows kind of the the areas to consider with your discussion?
The slide that had a lot of small writing on it?
That was probably the one.
Yeah. I didn't like that one so much. The other one's probably better.
So here we go. Does this slide help? Or if if needed, we can pull up the actual goals, policies and action language if that'll help move through your comments.
I don't know. I'll take consensus here. This slide's fine, fine for me. Council members, what do you think? I'm seeing nods all the way around. Except for Councilwoman Lee, was that a nod?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, so who would like to go first with comments based on this slide?
I can start.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
So I, I actually wanted to kind of dovetail on what Deputy Mayor Happen suggested about raising the or elevating the need for aquatics facilities. And and really, really make sure that that's fully reflected in in our own goals and policies specifically. So I would, I would like to propose that we we include a specific call out to to prioritize life-saving skills and emergency operation and response when we are when we are when we're thinking about our recreation programming and facility improvements. So we've talked about how the, we wanted to include the the framework of having a healthy community in our vision. And I think that having a specific call out for highly prioritizing life-saving skills, including the skill of swimming as as something that we care a lot about and and care about resourcing. I think it's worth mentioning that drowning is the number one cause of death for children under the age of five. And that California, just in in July of this year, issued a report that that our state has the highest rates of drowning, more so than pretty much every other state in the country. So I I think that life-saving skills, like when we talk about the hierarchy of need, you know, life being protecting life being the first and top hierarchy are top of the hierarchy. I, I really believe that it's important when we're thinking about crafting policies to specifically specifically identify the ones that we want to highly prioritize. And so swimming and aquatics as a life skill does save lives. And and furthermore, I think it's worth saying that our recreation facilities, our community centers will become our, our, our stand up emergency response centers. So our, you know, just like our police equipment duels as emergency prepared emergency response equipment, so do our recreation facilities. And in, you know, in September 2019, the County Board of Supervisors declared a climate emergency. We know that San Mateo County is is facing very serious and growing climate risks and including the, you know, high, high risk of natural disaster, fires, earthquakes. And and so our facilities themselves, which are mostly over 50 years old, require reinvestment so that they can actually serve the dual purpose of the everyday enjoyment of our community members as well as those, you know, those moments in when people have nowhere to go except their community members and we're putting up shelter beds and and bathroom facilities for for, you know, for folks who cannot return home. So in the event of a major emergency, I think that we need to be looking at our facility, our facility inventory with that lens and make sure that we are actually devoting the resources and setting explicit policy goals that address those those multiple purposes. And so that's, that's two specific callouts for additions. And then the third one is really kind of going back to the point about community gardening. And, you know, our own, our own Department of Public Health and countywide has issued a report that said 30 to 40% of San Mateo County residents are food insecure. And during the pandemic, we saw, we saw this you know, in in proportions that we, I don't think could have even imagined. Self-help for the elderly increased their daily output of meal delivery from 1,000 per day to 5,000 per day. We, I think we saw Harvest Food Bank double their capacity. And, you know, and, you know, countless hours, including many of our own volunteer donated time was spent distributing food, food and groceries to our, you know, unemployed labor force through the, the, the San Mateo Labor, Labor Council. So food insecurity is a very real issue in this county. And community gardens, I believe, play a part in that solution. It's a skill building opportunity. It's also a really important way to reinvent our, our land resources. And and it's also serves as a community building asset. So, so I think that, you know, I would love to see us make sure that we're integrating community gardens and edible food scaping as as a key strategy in our 20 year vision. So that's one, two, three. And then under a specific, a specific idea, I think I would also throw in is was around enhancing public transit access to to our community members. And I would like to propose in an action, an additional new action item that looks at issuing free or initiating a pilot program that would offer free Clipper Card passes for all public school students. So in the same way that we that we enable our students to take advantage of the public library resources and and have, you know, a clear and robust way to ensure every single student gets a library card. I think that we should be extending those same models into the transit resources that are operating and even, you know, including commute.org, for example. So, but Clipper Cards are very hard to get. Actually, I had, I had to jump through multiple hoops to to get a Clipper Card for my two public school students who are my children. And and I think that there's a way to streamline that. And I know that this is like a very specific idea, but I think that it's an idea with legs that, that I think that could be added to our action item list in terms of, and maybe it's not specifically Clipper Cards, but but phrased in a way that that looks at how do we, how do we help build ridership of of our student population? How, what role does the city of San Mateo have in facilitating that that connectivity between between our, our students, our young people and and the, you know, the transit goers? So those are, those are some of the additional policy objectives and and actions that I would, I would propose.
Thank you. Other council members? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any more to add than than I got a chance to add during our lengthy general plan subcommittee session, but I just wanted to, I, I, I thought you did, you did an excellent job of incorporating all that feedback and I, I just want to take a moment to just commend you and your team for all the work that you did on this because not only the initial work, but also trying to incorporate all this feedback. And a lot of it wasn't the same and a lot of it was, and it was all over the place, actually. So I, I was pretty impressed with how you you captured the essence of it and and most of the concerns that I brought up. You somehow got in there. So I, I, back to Councilmember Goful's question about 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 that one where we're trying to prioritize different modes of transportation. Is that something we're talking about now? Or is that, is that something you wanted feedback on? Or is, I don't see it. I don't necessarily see it here, but I don't know if we're, if you wanted us to talk about that or?
Yes, if you wanted to address that now, that would, that would definitely be helpful in in guiding how we draft the circulation. Yes, if you wanted to address that now, that would, that would definitely be helpful in in guiding how we draft the circulation element moving forward.
A- and, you know, you look at these, you look at traffic calming safety measures, you talk about bicycle infrastructure and pedestrian improvements and you know, we want all these. And and so is it a matter of if we don't prioritize, then we're just kind of spreading along the third, a third, a third? Or is it, is it you need us to prioritize these?
In general, there'll be prioritizing that goes, comes with the capital improvement program as we move forward. I think the thought is if there's a specific area of circulation that we want to see prioritized and specifically mentioned in the general plan, we would want to do that. Otherwise, we're going to be looking at all of these modes to serve all transportation users as part of the overall circulation element. So I think if there's a desire to see a certain area such as traffic safety clearly prioritized, you'd want to elevate it to a policy um within the circulation element. Otherwise, we would just use the body of the circulation element to guide decision-making moving forward.
Great, thank you. I I don't know if this is where Councilmember Goful's is going, but it's where I'd like to go. Um I I I feel that we have a very urgent need for pedestrian safety in our city. And you know, we had another close miss and it seems like we're we're getting lucky very frequently and it's just a matter of time before um we're not on the right side of of that luck. And and although all these things are very you know, urgent and very important, I think that um I think that that pedestrian safety, especially around um our neighborhood streets and these busy intersections um for me is is a very urgent priority that if we don't, if we don't prioritize first, then we are not going to live up to our Vision Zero. And it's just a matter of time and it's going to be very sad if we don't prioritize it. So um that's, that was the the main point I wanted to to make on that. And um that's about all my, that's all the comments I had.
Thank you very much. Next. Councilmember Goful.
Yes, I too want to acknowledge the process that brought us here, the incredible amount of feedback that we received, all the uh members of the public who participated in this process and the subcommittee and staff who did an amazing job at um synthesizing all of that information, all of that feedback into this uh incredible um element. So um Councilmember Rodriguez is is correct that I think that uh as I look at our circulation element and as I think about what our priorities are in order to uh live up to Vision Zero, we really do need to prioritize the the safety measures. It's before we can get to a a project like widening sidewalks and um making something uh perhaps more convenient or uh more aesthetically pre- pleasing or doing things that encourage people to 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 bike or walk more, we have to make it safer. Um and perhaps we'll be doing both at the same time. So I do think now is the time to to make that a priority. Uh with that, I I would just commend uh all of the the feedback and the way that it was synthesized by staff. Uh I have no other uh changes that I'd like to make. Thank you.
And Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta concur on the effort. It was amazing. When I sat down to read through all the information that people cared enough to come to, whether it was a Zoom meeting or a public meeting or to go online and do a survey. Um I I was delighted and and you're right, public uh input is often difficult to obtain. And then once you obtain it, it's difficult to sort of categorize and amalgamate and and channel into specific goals. So staff is to be commended, um our communities be commended. Those of you that did a heavy lift on the um general plan subcommittee are to be commended as well as the planning commission. It is a comprehensive list and when I read through it, yeah, I wanted everything. I mean, I I don't, I don't dispute that part of it. Uh one thing I would add, um we talked about putting in trees for shade, but trees are also one of the ways that you can extract carbon from the atmosphere. So if we could throw in uh an effort, um I I know Councilmember Lee was talking about food source and whatnot with reimagining lands. But uh for me, trees are equally as important because of the role they play in extracting carbon. So if we could just keep that in mind as we go forward, I'd be a big cheerleader for that. With respect to uh public safety and traffic calming, I see them go hand in hand. And so I don't know that you necessarily, uh I mean pedestrian safety, I don't know if you get one without the other. So um for me, whichever gives you the greatest bang for pedestrian safety, I'd certainly uh be in favor of it. Um and then with respect to, Councilmember Lee was talking about um enhancing access to transportation. I I do know, like, with the Joint Powers Authority, you can get free Clipper Cards and there are things available from the transit agencies. They might be better equipped to do it. I I think it's a good goal. I'm just not sure we're in the right position to do it. That's all. But it is important nonetheless, and I think it's very important to encourage our youth to take transportation because then what? You become transportation users for most of your life. It's not a foreign thing. Um so I I can appreciate that goal for certain, but it it was a very impressive document and I couldn't be prouder of our community and what they came up with. It's um, it was amazing, just amazing. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So I do have a couple. First, I want to thank everybody for their comments here tonight. And I want to thank staff uh because it's a lo- been a long and grueling uh uh job uh getting this far. And I want to congratulate on getting what um huge uh amount of public input that we have compiled. Um and it's um in in my experience uh so far on the General Plan Update Committee, I want to concur with what Councilmember Rodriguez said that I stand by the remarks that I made at the last couple of meetings that we had on the different uh subjects as the General Plan Updates Subcommittee. But I also have a couple of additional things that I think I've noticed that I want to make up some more specific comments on. So I'm looking at Goal C one, and it's in, that's a cer- part of the circulation goal. And where it says in the goal, design and implement a multimodal transportation system that is sustainable, safe, accessible. So right after the word system, I'd like to see if we could have it say design and implement uh implementing multimodal transportation system that prioritizes walking, biking, and transit and is sustainable, safe. So just intercheck those words. System that prioritizes walking, biking, and transit. Because that's ultimately what we have to do to make our roads and sidewalks and all of our other public infrastructure out there that people use to move around on safe. Also, I want to add that we need to uh take a look, I'm not sure exactly where we are on shared micromobility operators. I think it's something we're looking at, but I'm not sure. I want to make sure, though, that that's part of what we're doing and it's included in our plans that we're going to implement a shared micromobility uh policy that will bring providers and different modes, scooters, bikes, whatever.
We do have an existing permit process. Um due to the pandemic, a lot of the operators sort of ceased operations. So we haven't had any that are expressly interested in operating currently.
Several really leaned on me down at uh the League of California Cities uh annual conference a couple of weeks ago. Bird especially was all over me. And I noticed now I see their uh their equipment all over Redmond City.
We'd be happy to meet with them.
Okay, good, thanks. Regarding uh public services and infrastructure, Goal PS two. I- in the context of, you know, the fact that we have Cal Waters, our um private water purveyor, this is something that's stuck in my cross since, you know, uh getting onto the council, really thinking about this because as the process of governing water provision, water uh testing, water, maintenance of infrastructure, watering, everything, everything water in the city of San Mateo, we're kind of left out of, we don't really have a voice. There's Bosca and there's a representative over there of Cal Water who supposedly represents San Mateo, but he's never reported to me. Or I don't think, has, have any other council members ever received a port, a report from our person representing us at Bosca? No, seeing heads shake. I think that we need to try and um find a way to have more of a voice in making sure that San Mateo has safe, sustainable, and resilient water supply. Um and we need to uh maybe have a hand in helping to develop the urban water management plan and tracking water usage by single-family homes and multifamily homes and all other kinds of uses. Um we have a couple golf courses, one private, one public. We have parks, all sorts of different things. I think we need to get a better picture and make it public. What is water usage in San Mateo? And um how does it break down? Um and so we, the public needs to know more about this because they seem to always have questions whenever development's being proposed. The question is always, well, where are we getting the water? The truth is, we don't know enough, the people of San Mateo, about water to be able to. That's why that question keeps coming up. Among other questions. Um uh Goal PS three which is provide storm drainage, it says sewer and flood control facilities. Um now I'm thinking about um we need to mention flood control facilities, I think, include levees. But we, you know, they also include things like pump stations and uh uh stormwater uh basins and so forth uh for temporary storage of water. And um I would like to make levees more of a priority in what we're doing because of the the constant and growing increasingly uh increasingly uh it seems volatile uh condition known as sea level rise because we have large chunks of ice breaking off of uh greenland and the South Pole, the Antarctic. And so these things are unpredictable, but when they happen, um I think we're going to see some large things happening. And we need to be prepared for all those eventualities. And I think we need to take a closer look at, and I know One Sea La, I mean, um what is it? One Shoreline is working on this, but we haven't uh um heard a whole lot about that. But I think we should have an element, you know, or mention in our uh public service and infrastructure element that discusses that. And uh makes it so that there is uh information that is um not only collected, but it's made available to the public. Um and it describes a process whereby we're going to take certain steps to deal with these uh large threats. Under Goal PS four, I think um under here equitable facilities, it's PS dash P four point one. Um there's one that says more public restrooms. And I'd like to add um in the downtown because it says here especially in neighborhood parks, which is important, but we need public restrooms downtown. Restaurants don't like to let just anybody walk in and use their restrooms. It's becoming really obvious that people have a hard time downtown. So um I think we should include that. And I think that's getting to be about it. Um I just want to say that in terms of comments I've heard tonight regarding here's one. I think there should be a policy that has to, and this has come up in the General Plan Update Subcommittee meetings when we're going over different land uses in the uh uh priority areas, um the study areas. And um certain land uses were proposed to be uh residential, large multifamily residential possibly uh developments, multi floors uh within five hundred feet of roadways that have in excess of a hundred thousand vehicles per day going by. And it's important that this is a concern because it's not just uh pollution from fuel emissions, but it's also particulates, which all those tires uh throw up all sorts of rubber dust and parts of friction surfaces and heavy metals, all sorts of metals, flying into the air all the time. And it's generally an unhealthy environment, especially for children, within five hundred feet of those types of uses. So I'd like to uh propose that we have a policy that discourages new development of housing within five hundred feet of those roadways in excess of a hundred thousand vehicles per day. And that we actually in the places where we're looking at that on our uh land use uh the decisions that we've made already as we're going through the land use uh map and the zoning map that we consider going back and swapping some of the spaces that may be up against those types of uses for other uses. They could be office buildings, there could be shopping place, there could be different types of uses there. And the housing should be set farther back, just so people are able to have a better uh health condition uh in the places where they live and they don't have to keep their windows closed all the time. Uh I know that we can filter air, but people shouldn't have to be indoors all the time to have healthy air. So um that, and then I want to go back to Vision Zero, which I heard much mentioned of. Uh it's a policy that I think uh we can't say enough about, especially in light of the recent situation that everybody has seen and heard about. Um I want to go back to what I've said before about um slowing cars down. And I do believe, and I need to repeat it, that we need to slow the speed limit on our residential streets to twenty miles per hour. It has been done in other places. I think we should do it here. Uh if a car is moving five miles per hour slower, it's that much more time for somebody to see the car coming. It's that much more time for the car to put on the brakes and stop. Um it just creates a generally much safer uh setting on the roads. Uh and so the outcomes can be much better, especially if we're working towards Vision Zero. We need traffic calming um in in many different places. I know we have our traffic action plans uh throughout many of the neighborhoods that we've been working on for a long time. And I think the major uh difficulty there is coming up with funding to do all of that work. Um but I think possibly we need to look for ways to maybe reprioritize some of our work projects. And uh since we seem to be having a problem with more careless driving, I mean, I have to say, running stop signs, especially on El Camino, is uh just epidemic. I see it happening every day, almost every time I approach El Camino from my neighborhood, which is Hayward Park, to go across El Camino. Somebody, the light turns red and there goes one, two, or three more cars. And it's, it's just really unsafe. Uh I personally was hit one time by a car that ran a red light crossing an intersection. Um and uh um so it's, it's close to home, but it's real. Um and we need to do something to slow down. I know we need more enforcement. Uh more, more police, more motorcycle police especially, uh sitting in uh prime locations to catch uh speeders and unsafe drivers. And also, I want to make a mention of this. Uh I don't know if this is completely true, but I heard that uh in that particular incident that happened on Franklin at Bays Road, that the police said that they were unable to charge the driver who in 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 spite of the flashing yellow caution lights that had been activated by the pedestrians and in spite of the car that was stopped waiting for pedestrians to cross at this intersection, there were two lanes heading in that direction. This driver chose to pass that car at a kind of high rate of speed, it looked like to me. I don't know, speed level is thirty-five there, which I think is too fast anyway. It is a residential area. But this driver wasn't charged with any sort of reckless driving, which I think it was, that instead the police told people who asked that it was, well, not a reckless driver, just an inexperienced driver. Well, I happen to know that when I was an inexperienced driver, I learned a lot by getting a ticket. So I think people need to be charged with something when these near calls happen. Um and um if there's a law uh that could otherby otherwise be used, it should be used. Um a- and there is video showing this incident. Everybody has seen it probably fifteen times now. So I want to say that 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 needs to be a priority. We need to step up and improve on providing that kind of safety so that people can get their kids, walk their kids to school. And also, one last thing. The Safe Routes to School program that we have has a lot of gaps. Um it's good if you're within a block of school, but generally all the links that need to go from this neighborhood all the way across to the school aren't there. And we need to really prioritize uh completing the bicycle um and pedestrian in those neighborhood safety projects. Okay, so those are the things I have to say. Are there other things that, anybody else have any other comments here?
I just wanted to add my support for um reducing speed limits um throughout our community. I think that's kind of the, one of the, might not be the easiest thing to do, but it might be the most effective thing that bang for the buck we can do just everywhere. Um just reduce the the time to stop and um give more tickets. Just reduce the time to stop and give more tickets and maybe make San Mateo a less tempting place to speed through and cut through.
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments, anybody? Councilmember Lee, are you there?
Okay. I think she went to the beach.
She might have a comment, I don't know, sure. Okay. Well then, Mr. Dahl, do you have everything you need here tonight?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good. Well then, we'll move on down the agenda. We have one, item 14, or no, I'm sorry. Item 14, Public Employee Pension Reform Act, 180-day waiting period waiver request. And I believe we have, the request is to adopt a resolution finding the nature of employment for retired and new to Kelly Casale as necessary to fill a critically needed position before 180 days have passed pursuant to California Government Code 755-22.56. Do we have the presentation? I just get it. Yeah, I'll take a motion. Let's make that a motion. Oh, public comment. Okay, presentation, please.
So, good evening.
Oh, hi.
This is my item. Christina Marsberger, Community Development Department Director, and you did almost give my entire presentation. So we are asking you to adopt a resolution, the nature of which you just described. Our code enforcement division is currently down one code enforcement officer. We recently onboarded a second, and so we have two experienced code enforcement officers and a recently vacated code enforcement manager position, which we did not have a lot of notice on. We have no shortage in incoming cases, life safety at the top of the list. And so we do view this as a pressing need and are asking for you to approve this resolution.
Thank you. I think I can safely say that we're here to help. Anybody have any, any questions? No, public comment?
If you'd like to comment on item number 14, Peppera, please raise your hands. Mr. Mayor, we have four attendees left in the meeting, and I have no hands raised.
No hands raised. Councilmember Lee, are you there? Would you like to say anything? Okay. Back here to the council, public comment is closed. Back here to the council.
I make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
A second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, we have the roll call.
Councilmember Gothols.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pappan.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee is no longer on the call. And Mayor Bonilla.
Yes.
Motion carries. Four is zero.
Thank you very much. And now, the next item is city attorney compensation. Closed session, next item is closed session. But first, we do reports and announcements.
Or any comment?
Comment? Reports and announcements, anybody?
Do you have to take the public comment on the closed session before?
Oh, okay.
I don't know, I missus. Yes.
Yes, the new reports and announcements first, before we go to the closed session. Okay. You have something? No? Oh. You go ahead, councilmember.
Last meeting, we were asked to take up a a motion or a a resolution in support of fixing San Mateo. And then today, we were asked again to take up that motion. The county is in the process right now of studying whether they want to support such a body of oversight for the Sheriff's Department. I'm in support of that. I'd like to see us as a council state our support.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rodriguez?
On this?
Yes.
So this would be a, it would come back to us and we discuss it?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay. Councilmember Lee, are you here? Okay. No. Deputy Mayor?
That's fine by me.
Okay, good. I support that also. So if we could bring that back, please. Thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments, then I think we're going to adjourn to closed session. And we will be coming back. Oh, is there a closed session? City Attorney Compensation. So do we have item 15? Is there a presentation? Is there any discussion?
There is no presentation, but I would take public comment before that closed.
Okay, good. Public comment on this item, which is City Attorney Compensation.
Anybody, members of the public on the call remotely, that we have nobody in the room for item number 15, please raise your hand if you'd like to provide public comment.
Come on, come on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no hands raised.
Okay, thank you.
I got no poker face right now. I got no poker face whatsoever. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry, but I
Okay, we're going to call this meeting back to order. Closed session has been closed. And thank you, everybody, for hanging in here this long. And with regard to this item, 16, City Attorney Compensation, we will adopt a resolution to authorize action regarding the City Attorney Compensation. Whereas, this is, whereas on July 7, 2022, the City Council considered the performance of the City Attorney. And whereas the performance of the City Attorney meets or exceeds all expectations. And whereas San Mateo City Charter Section 4.02 provides that salary shall be fixed by resolution. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of San Mateo, California hereby resolves that one, the monthly salary for the City Attorney is established to be $22,100, which reflects a 4% increase. The effective date for the monthly salary of the City Attorney established in item one above shall be upon the beginning of the next pay period following the adoption of this resolution. Do we have a motion approved?
Second. Or so moved, which?
Second.
Motion and second. Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Gothols.
Yes.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Mayor Bonilla?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.